All right. Oh, yes. Get him in the back there. You lost your seat?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. I'd like to start July 1st Select Board meeting. Um, and I'd like to start by electing a Select Board Chair. I can be responsible for a year and a half. Um, so can you have to do it by secret ballot or just like we did it by secret ballot before?
I nominate Donna Curry as Select Board Chair for the coming year.
Okay, um, so I guess we'll vote. Um, and any other nominations?
What that I know of.
All right, uh, all in favor of, um, Donna being Select Board Chair, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will do it for a while.
I'm coming, please, come in here.
There you go. All right, next on the agenda is the election of the Board of Assessors Chair. Do I have some nominations on the floor? Actually from the table. I'd like to nominate, um, Lisa.
Accept.
All right, um, all in favor for, um, Board of Assessors for Lisa's being Chair? All right, let's go to warrants. I'd like to make a motion that we accept payroll number 118 for $3,228.37. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to move that we approve accounts payable number 119 for $12,834.46. Do I have a second? All right, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes for June 24th, 2024. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Kim, you abstain for that? All right, um, I'll ask for citizens issue. I have one on here, but, um, since we have several guests here, I'll ask, um, any citizens issues?
Um, is the player the forest on my regular?
Hopefully you've seen some. I was there today and, um, I would say it looks a lot better than it did in February when we started this. Um, that, that actually is a topic that we were going to talk about later. It is on the agenda, um, to, to talk about, where do we go from here? Because he had till July 1st. He, he's not expected to finish and remove everything that's there. Um, when I was there today, there was a trailer that had a bunch of, um, engines and whatnot that is still. Um, I also talked to the next door neighbor and talked about him in his well and we talked about, and he showed me where the property line was. So what I would like to do is go talk to, um, talk to him tomorrow and, um, have him move any machines, any engines that are still on anywhere near the property line to be moved, those that he's going to keep. My understanding is he's still moving some of those machines, um, some of the engines and. But my understanding is also he will not move, remove them all. Um, and we can't require that he moves them all. But anything that he does plan to keep or need to make sure that there is no oil in there, no gas, no, anything that can move. Um, so, but, um, I have been in regular communication with him. He's been sending pictures. And, um, like I said, I was there today and I know there's a change.
I would say my house is starting to come, but that's not really, uh, um, I, my thing is, you know, he set up a plan that it would be cleaned up by July 1st and it's not. So I had suggested, where do we know what's going to happen if it's not clean? And I don't think that happened. Um, in the statute of the state, I mean, you have all the powers that you could clean it up, um, charge it, rent, add it with real estate tax. He doesn't pay for the lien on his house. So it's, you have all the tools, but there must be a way to do something. Unlike, my next thing would be, I'm going to go to the neighbor. He doesn't have much money. I'm going to pay. We have to work, analyze, figure it out. Now, if that's a problem, you expect it now, I have it in with the, with the water. I will come to take the step forward because that's what did happen. All this oil, antifreeze, brake oil, that all went into the soil. And I'm sure it's in his well. We saw how it proceeded. So I expect that you can more clean that table. I don't expect a clean yard, a normal, organized, like, things with oil and all that stuff, actually. Just he should have enough respect for his neighbors, not to do things like that.
As I said, I'll continue to work with him. One of the things when I talked to the neighbor was that he told me five years ago that the water was already, um, bad.
Yeah, no, he, he complained, yeah.
Right, and, and this is five years later. Um, it's really hard to, um, to say, explain completely on that. And, um, and that's the sense I got from him. And he, he actually, we, we sat and had a glass of water and he brought the water out of a jug. He said he does not use his water and he has not. Um, but he also said that it's been contaminated for five years or at least five years ago, it was when the payers discovered it. So, um, was that before the neighbor started doing what he was doing? That was out of our control. What, what happened five years ago, whether it should have been pursued then.
Did he say what it was contaminated with?
Uh.
What it, what was the contamination of his water?
Oh, I don't know. I haven't.
Right, and I didn't ask him that. He just does not use it.
He said he has no money to attach. Well, I said I would pay for it.
It'd be interesting to see if, um, what it, what it's contaminated with now. Um, but like I said, I, I will continue to work with, um, with Chris to, um, to continue to clean it up, but, um.
The thing, Mary, I know what you're, I know what you're saying. And, and if we were at a point now, this is just my thinking. They can say what they think. I think if we didn't see any movement to this point, wait, 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 let me finish. We didn't see any movement to this point. Yeah, we, we take a harder line. He's, he's making progress and I personally don't want to financially hurt somebody if their commitment is, even if it's not by the exact deadline, to, to get it done. Yes, if we have to apply pressure at some point, you know, we will, but we, we probably will sit and talk with him and get another secondary, you know, plan in place for finalizing it.
That's a problem, but I, I would have cleaned it up. I would have cleaned it up a little bit.
I know.
It's not such a big deal.
I know.
For example, you times, but junkyard, sell the engine, whatever he had. Have the cars picked up and they pay you for all of it, but it's just a matter of movement.
Yeah, and I know there's some challenges there. I, I will say, I know he's gotten rid of two cars. The second car disappeared, um, this last week. So two vehicles that were there that were totally junk. Um, one of the challenges though, you can't just give away a junkyard, a car. You have to actually have payers and all the legal information which he didn't have. Um, some, some of us would be able to do that pretty quickly and others not. Uh, I do know he's making, uh, an effort. Like I said, I saw even today, there was another trailer full of nothing but metal. Um, and I also think part of the problem, and I, I'm just explaining this. I'm not justifying it because, um, I have been seeing him every week, talking to him every week, and it's progress, it's slow progress. But I, oh, one of the problems has been it's like he moves things from one place to the other because there is no room to put any. And at least now you can actually walk down there, take your car down there. Um, so if, if the neighbor wants to get his well checked, I, I think that'd be great.
I would organize that.
And I would love to see how compared to five years ago, but yeah, I do know that, um, I just talked to the individual today. I do know that that well was contaminated five years ago. And, um, and we just started this process in February, I think, and.
But he complained the water was still there. That's a long time.
Yeah, I, 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 yeah, I can't.
He didn't get anywhere. That's why I said I would help.
Yep, yep, and, and I'm, I'm, I don't feel good about that, which is why I keep going there every week. I, if, if I make a commitment, I will keep it. And, uh, I am.
Check the progress and make sure.
No, no, and, and I know that you know you've seen some progress, but, um, I, I just, we can say, yes, we can start to pay a fine, but I, I feel like if we can just continue to make the progress we're making, it will take it, probably at least another month.
I agree, but if you tell him, look, this is our rules. That's what happens if you don't try to prove. I don't say anything, oh, fine, but let him know.
Right.
Because he did ask that question of what's going to happen?
I don't know.
If, if I'm not completely done by July 1st.
He did ask me that.
Yeah.
And I, I told him that we were, we were meeting tonight and that I would talk to him tomorrow. So I actually have plans to see him tomorrow. And we'll have a conversation. So, um, Kim, we'll have some thoughts about that. What do I need to tell him tomorrow?
I think I would put it back on him and say, when can you have this done? Let Kim tell us that, because then it's going to make him think, oh, oh, oh.
Also, I, I don't, I don't, is, is he absolutely clear on what the expectation is, the final end point?
I don't think so.
So I think we need to clarify that as well.
And I mean, one of the things I, I want to tell is anything that's, uh, an engine, one has to be totally cleaned out. And it needs to be moved well away from the neighbor's property.
But it should be in, it should be contained of any fluid, not leaking or around. No, even a floor. All this stuff goes through a garage door.
Well, technically they should be.
That's the best thing. I think the second best thing is if you build some kind of a closure, but it catches you out of the point, goes into the ground. Oil, transmission oil, break with coolant, that's all poison.
I think he said those engines should be cleaned.
I never checked, but.
Here you go. Yeah, and I would like to have, um, Gary, once he decides which machines, which engines he wants to keep, to come and check to see what's in there. Yep, yep, and try to make everybody feel better, but.
I think you should give the object to Gary where it says what should be, because I don't have too much confidence in Gary.
Yep, I will talk to him tomorrow. I'll continue to nudge him. He knows we're not done. He's making progress. Um, I, I will make sure that, um, anything that's near the neighbor's property. I, I did at least find out where the well was.
Very well.
Yep, yep. So, um, you know, because we can't make him clean up everything. I mean.
No, I don't say that. But at least if it's organized, if there is some oils and blatantly hanging around. I have no problem. The neighbor has no problem.
Yep.
But right now, it's, you know, there.
Yep, it's pushing on the safety and health issues. That's, um, both the aquifer behind his house and the neighbor's well. And both of those things, um, are open. It's interesting because there is nothing in the backyard where the aquifer is.
I have been on the phone.
I have, quite a few times now. Um, so, um, but, um, I'll continue to work with him, but.
I'll be back.
Well, and like, as I told you before, you're welcome to come back every week. I will, I try to meet him every week and try to keep him or something. So, um, we're making small gains, which is more than we could save five years ago. All right, so we can put that off our list, which is way at the end there. Uh, any other, um, citizens issues? Okay, well, I'm, I'm bringing this one up because it actually was an issue that, um, came up, um, when we had our porticulture group, um, do cleaning the other day at the ferry landing. There was a trailer there that I found out had been there a couple of weeks. I had actually seen it one week and come back and seen it. Um, and we actually had a nice conversation with, um, the chief deputy, uh, who was here earlier. Um, so one of the concerns that we have right now, we need to figure out how to deal with, was there are, seem to be at least one boat and trailer that was just parked, um, at the ferry landing. Um, one individual I talked to who lives right there said actually there was a second one that had been there for a week as well. And so, um, one, I think we need to consider putting signs up. And so, Kim, I don't know if that's something that you would work with us on.
I put it on the right side. They might know placement, where they would receive placement of a step over.
Yep, um, because we, we noticed when we were looking at ordinance, it's, it's clear on the ordinance, you cannot have overnight parking. And you can't sleep overnight. And I've actually heard a complaint about somebody was sleeping in their car. Uh, but there's nothing that says you can unless you read the ordinance. And so, somehow or another, we need to have something clear. Uh, and I'll work with Edie to, um, to see if we can figure out who owns the trailers. And it seems to be a little bit of a challenge. You say you can't park the trailer here. We have no sign to say so. You can't leave it there or something. So, um, got some.
No overnight parking. That's a problem.
Right, right.
That's it. You said you had your right. I don't think you have to sit, but be around the long time.
Yep, and that's why I think it's more of a, um, road sign. But we can work together on that. Probably no overnight parking, no overnight camping or sleeping.
Yeah, I can order, uh, like, maybe you have, could that's been told or where it would be disposed, somebody could bring it.
Yep. Yep, yep, yep.
Maybe we need to put a post there and sign on it rather than just patching something to stand alone or show what the.
I think when you come down the hill where it should be, so that people see when they come. There's only one way to get there. They were there and.
You know, some of these guys, they do beat the hole down there overnight because they're coming right back next morning or they take a couple of thuds. You know, some of these guys come right to me. I understand that and I think there should be some flexibility for these guys. Uh, people sleeping in their vehicles there, almost this standalone. I think we need to keep a, the, uh, take that into consideration.
And, well, and also, I, I know that, um, I've heard the, the engines take off at like four or five in the morning, especially in the summer. So people could well be sleeping there or get an early start when the sun goes out. Um, and also, you know, the one trailer has a flat tire. So I just assume that it's got a flat tire, it's going to take a day to fix it. In two weeks, yeah. And so just to, to maybe let the people know, I, I, I can't imagine just calling it all and pulling it off immediately. But, you know, giving those folks a warning, say, this isn't.
People sleeping there overnight. I know first makes a thousand dollars a week and was sleeping empty, empty, seven hundred. Thousand dollars a week, that's pretty, twice. In the sky.
Yep. New thoughts? Nope. By the way, when the chief deputy was here, he did say it was going to take a look. So maybe by the time I get home, I'll just do that from here. Uh, Rose, any complaints?
Uh, get a ship inside. I've got a few up. No real update. So what was the week? Ready. Catch gravel, less than, get these prices pulled together and work on the big shore. I got a few more things with that. Clean properly.
Yep, yep.
I'm a little nervous about that, but that's a very serious one.
Where is this?
Uh, east shore.
Oh, that one that we, that you sort of, you would file us, across from the, um, McNamara.
Yeah, if, if like permits required, there may be, maybe a break. I don't know. I'll wait down.
But it looks like something needs to be done.
I got, sure something needs to be done. But it's standing, I'm gonna try to do so.
Mm-hmm.
Self, maybe, maybe, uh. So I need, before I do, ride out the road, I need part of this.
What exactly did, did you see is being?
Maybe water and stuff, covers, washing, rubbing. Per. Per. So the only I can really see do is prepare after this is paid for raw, some smaller stuff. This may require a prairie, old rocks down there. You've got a big ass, but it may be. You have to break the guard and create on it. I don't know. It, it's.
She was right to complain.
It's definitely a concern.
Yep.
Uh, seems stable for that. It should be addressed at some point on the test.
How about coal patch?
Not available. I don't know, Wednesday, yes, and they haven't had any. So.
So what?
Power that I talk to about doing this, the spud began, so why is it going on him while it's gone here?
This is, yeah.
I got a call in with a second source. I was close.
So what, what, what could we do? Could we do if we don't use?
Yeah, prepare a little bit up here, prepare a little bit. Put some on Saturday. He's a resident, uh, which was justified. So I got a little bit more.
Where'd you get it?
I had to get my ball. Can't get some with, get some with bucket. So they make it once a year. Perfect process.
Does it sound? So is that where the case could you stop gap until?
I couldn't get some off, off next, asshole. They got it in bags up there and stuff. So I can, just the real issue was like down by the tennis court, where the, the top layer, the top is missing, but there's a layer underneath. That's the only coal patch of, next is the only that's going to stay in there. And that's very temporary. Like on Doggett Road, the whole pavement, when that happens, the coal patches, the existing pavement breaks out, we're going to pull that. So it's possible.
Thinking of Doggett Road, I just want you to know that, that both, um, proposals went in. We had two proposals, um, that we proposed for, one for Doggett Road, one for Bill's, Bill's, Bill's hotel there, that Cosway. And we just submitted those today. Deadline is Friday night tonight, so. It's with the, it's a very long name. Main Infrastructure Adaptation Plan application. So one for Doggett Road and then one for, um, those two. One for, yeah, there's the Cosway there. Both of them were for, um, seventy-five thousand. And that's basically to, to put a plant, like design with you. Uh, we saw that there was given us problems in the past. So those did get, uh, submitted today.
All right. But last Monday before the ceremony, I was waiting in COVID. My feet were, like, right there.
Really?
Oh, yeah, like, not waiting, slash, standing right there, what? What I'm concerned with is, you know, these credits, Kerry's note. I don't know about, uh, framing, but if anybody knows anything about legal, they can raise.
I mean, she's so.
No, there are no, no?
Oh, no, she's a professional.
Okay, good, go ahead. You'll get it.
Are you?
They don't hear.
It's coming, get it. Who else did it?
Well, I mentioned feel better. He was so happy.
Is it one of the smaller ones? Do you think it was a younger one? No, it was a big one? And, and usually they're so skittish, like they don't stick around.
Yeah, but.
Oh, he was getting, he was mad at you for messing up his work.
Showed up. And then when I got down there and it's getting, the foot was right next to water and I'm cleaning the cover though. Right there and he was so happy. And I did want to grab a foot.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the first job.
You get ready.
All right. Um, anything for course on us? I get to say. Um, April, do you want to handle the amendments to the town committee's law?
Sure. And then I guess the first question, do you, is the select board ready to consider these reports at this meeting?
I think they're reasonably.
So I'll just run through them quickly. So the main reason, um, to amend the town committee policy is to dissolve, um, several property related committees we have because the select board would like to create one overarching town property maintenance committee oversee all the properties instead of having. Bring all that down together. And while they're doing that, there are two of the minor amendments, um, that I'm interested in making for the fall shutters policy. So the first one is to add the harbor committee, the committee that choose for ordinance. Um, in that section, we have all the committees that are formed that way. And we did not have the harbor committee. And they are formed by workers. So I want to add them, make that correct. Um, section sixty-one, I want to add the requirement that the select board can, uh, changes to committee pages on the website. At this point, I think it said that the committee will grant to the councilor, but ultimately it should be the select board for the two parts. So I just wanted to put that here in that box list. Um, section seven A, I wanted to add July 1st, that's the beginning date for committees to elect their officer. We have set an end date of nine months and the objective fair is to, um, collect officers every year. So if you're doing that or doing this, we want to be that clear and give them a specific, a big enough window of time to get that done. Section eight C is adding a select board, um, just being able to remove committee members for cause after notice and hearing. Uh, this is the right alignment of state statutes which have that requirement. Um, and then in the appendix, we're going to, they're interested in developing the right landing committee, the town hall committee, the horticulture committee. Replace it with this town property maintenance committee. Um, and while they're developing committees, the broadband and technology committee, um, was already, well, a few meetings ago, but we wanna remove it from the appendix here. Uh, to add how ordinance will be committed as finished work, so we answered that from the appendix. And I believe the roof committee, uh, Jim Pramo, on Jim Pramo's request.
And then F was to establish a town property maintenance. So I'd like to make a motion that we accept, um, these policy changes for the town.
Second that.
All in favor? And just to talk a minute about the, uh, town property maintenance committee. Who, um. Struggled a little bit sometimes this year, like, there's things that need to happen here, there are things that need to happen at the town hall, there's things that need to happen there, uh, at the fair landing. And instead of having different people doing different things, or sometimes they're connected, sometimes they're not, that we felt like we needed more of a committee that could. Wind up having some sort of subcommittees or whatever, but a committee that takes more responsibility for the, for all the maintenance for the towns, because like now there's consistency.
In the zoning. It is, I found that if you establish a town property maintenance committee, replace the.
Yes, yes. Because we still need to have somebody take care of the town hall, we still need to have somebody take care of the.
Just the right landing town hall and the.
Horticulture, yeah.
We don't even have anybody that really kind of oversees this building.
Yeah, yeah, we have nobody.
This, this, the town office will also be included in that.
Yes. So which is why we called it town property maintenance. And because the horticulture was an ad hoc, and sometimes the right landing was doing some of this stuff, sometimes the horticulture was doing it, it was never total clarity. Um, that we thought this creating one committee, which we started talking about actually a couple of weeks ago, that, um. Well, we haven't fleshed that out, what it would look like. Or chair or anything like that, we just know that, um, this is something that's been on our radar, and so, um, that would come. And hopefully we'll, we'll use some of the same people, the next people, but, um, you know, who will be in charge of that? How that will run, we have to figure that out.
I think it's been a little disapproving here, just to add something. Given since it's a policy change, I think if you want that, um, standing committee, permit to monitor. The physical condition of Westport Island Town, all the whole day, and land, advise the select board on repair, maintenance improvements, and your patients, and the core repairs. Feasible. Seven members. Seven members.
Yeah, we're testing this out, see what, what happens. It's new. All right. Any comments, questions? All right, let's go on to, um, committee appointments.
You don't have the, I believe you could sign all those, you signed it after the meeting.
Right.
But you do wanna make a motion to approve this. So those per, top two are actually for the, what, the chair? For the session's chair?
Okay.
Which you already voted on.
Yep.
And then this list is, uh, everybody else. There's a lot.
Okay, so these two are assigned shortly. All right, you all ready? Would you all accept the fact that there is, um, probably thirty-five, forty names on this, um?
Yes, and just background, we do it every year, uh, this is reappointment of all of our committee members, if they want to be reappointed. Who wants the committee chair that's, um, supposed to be appointed, so. I have followed up with the big people, like a little captain, a back team. Be appointed, who's, who's new, so. Put all that together in a big list, and then we roll over.
So actually, yeah, there's pretty much what we would already have, so I'd like to move that we accept this forty. Forty item list, I think there are at least forty I told them there.
Yeah, so they don't know the.
Do I have any second? These are pretty much our standard.
Yeah. Yeah, no surprise.
Everything from the animal resource office, officers, code enforcement officers, history committee, it just goes on and on.
Pretty much just everyone was reappointed.
Yep. Kim, did you say it? All in favor? All right, and we will spend till midnight tonight signing this. All right, uh, next on the agenda is admin items, so April, wanna take it?
Yeah, so, um. I hope we, um. I just wanted to clarify on all of the, whether we were asking, um, whether to clean the bathrooms. It is, it's so very clear, how much is, really? Um, I believe what we are just gonna be doing is changing our rental guide, to make it clear that. Either they do the thorough deep cleaning, including the bathrooms. Or they're seeing hundred dollars to treat a deposit, or part thereof. So we're gonna consult with Dee, see if hundred is enough. If she had to do it completely, the whole place, would that be enough to cover, um, what she charged us for cleaning? Do we have to adjust that, uh, based on her prices? But, uh, that's a pretty good.
So anywhere, a hundred fifty dollars. That's nothing, a hundred fifty dollars. Paying a hundred fifty, clean the product.
Yeah.
That's a little problem.
Yeah. But we, again, we need to consult with Dee, she'll tell us, but, you know.
Maybe, you know, it's two hundred fifty dollars cleaning, that's it. If you go to Airbnb, they tell you exactly, so much and so much on a hundred fifty dollar cleaning. Finish. Don't want to go there.
But we don't wanna make a average for each quarter person. A lot of people want to be at the town hall for the coverage. But in fact, that is something, we don't have a, we go to the cleaning.
Only cleaning is to fifty, it's clean, you go inspect, and wait, it's on its own, clean, then it's four fifty, all of that.
Yeah, I've done an agreement that, uh, uh, but I would like to talk to Dee Dee to see what, what she would say. And I think, I think it should be clear in there that it does say include the bathrooms, because, um, if not, um, we're stuck doing. Right, and we're gonna make some.
And trash, yep. And floor that's, yep. We're very specific about the kitchen and all that other stuff, but bathrooms is never like.
Yet all of us go in there and say, oh, this bathroom is spilt.
Right, that's the worst thing.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll talk to Dee Dee and get back, and, and then revisit how much money we needed charged here. Um, Chris Cooper.
Oh, Chris Cooper, so, um, the select board previously agreed to pay him two hundred plus mileage, up to one hundred plus mileage. Two. Um. And Ashley and I were talking after this past town meeting, which went on quite a while. And he, it was, you know, intense, and he had to really, um, do a lot of hard work. We just felt like, well, it's not, other towns pay for five hundred dollars, this is a huge range of what towns pay him, he doesn't ask for a fee. So you're kind of like guessing in the dark about what's fair for him. Um, so Ashley, you know, and I talked to her, I thought maybe we should just load it and see how you thought about paying him a hundred an hour, um, instead of. So then he gets compensated for however long town meeting takes, which we don't know until we get there.
Couple pretty contentious meetings. Um, and, and I feel like you really, um, it does help to, um. Smooth it out. To calm people down, well, sometimes. So, um. I know when we talked a few months ago, we were kind of embarrassed that we were overpaying a hundred dollars. Fine, when other towns are paying a lot more than that. Um. But I feel like. For, you know, I, I, we met for over five hours, I, I feel like the limit. Whether five hundred, two hundred feels better, effective feels better, um, but that's just my. That's just.
And for, for this. Those years from four people, who needs to. No, I think you're probably right, three fifty's nice, or a little better. I'm sure, but. Especially capability is that kind of thing.
Yeah, I feel it for a little bit, though.
I do too. How about a hundred an hour capital? It's a five-hour meeting. But if you went over that, that's it, that's, that's.
So.
Five fifty dollars. Usually we don't go that long, but.
Yeah.
Well, we have so many. Realism aside, right? So.
That's a typical one.
Technically, it'll be a, yes, maybe, all right, yeah, but. That's, that's just what I.
You made a. Don you live?
Uh, I would say. That's a deal, which, uh, purpose.
So I'll pay for it. Because that's what takes so long.
Exactly, exactly.
Uh, no.
I think.
Well, I can remember, Gil says to.
Yep.
Yeah, it's, 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 yeah.
It's not just the time there as well.
I would agree with the hundred dollars an hour capital. But, uh.
Yep, so I make a motion that we change his rate, um, effective last week. To a hundred dollars an hour, uh, capital. A second? All in favor?
All right.
All right. And I, I thought he really did just get those donations. Up the number of donations, we gave him. All right, town hall rental application, we have a shore run, uh, association that comes every, uh. August eighteenth this year, I wanna make sure that gets in the, um. Information.
And this is the website too, the link, they have their own website.
Yep.
Of Port Island dot org.
It's our charity road race, it's, uh, ten Ks. If you're running in three, four, five miles, which is about half, five Ks, if you're, um, walking. And that really is to support the, um, Westport Island Fire Department. And so he is asking to, um, rent, because this is something that we're doing as part of the town, rather than, even though he doesn't necessarily, or the organization doesn't come here. This would be an example of when we would consider, um, resident, rather than, uh, somebody coming by. So, um, I'd like to move that, um, we accept his rental application and to say resident. Do I have any second?
Second.
All in favor? So that means he has to pay a dollar, not including, and it does say, um, it's actually a dollar per day, and two hundred dollars a day for non-residents, but the security costs is a hundred dollars. We may need to change that. Who is the? Oh, this is Rod, Rod Whitney, representing the West, Westport, Shore Run Association.
And Rod does have a, um, the organization, that's the address of the office, I think that's.
So before we sign this, should we take time to revisit this, since this isn't from Congress, or maybe we ought to go?
I think, I think we should take the applications we currently have to turn face and. And Dee. But I think just having it.
Well, this is the one that we had mixed with last year.
I, I did explain them.
Well, you know, I would, I, I would say that if the bathroom is clean, that that's enough, say, we'll keep a hundred dollars. Don't do, even if you do half a dollar. Because I can't imagine somebody coming in and just saying, we just don't think the bathroom is, if they, if any other stuff. So I would say a hundred dollars security deposit.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have, we have it signed, this is just the application, it's a, we have a climate reference agreement.
Yep.
Maybe they're willing to up it.
Yep. So I made a motion to approve the application.
Yeah, I can see that. If it doesn't, so the fate of the front box gave us a.
She would check. The, um, the parking area.
No, so we have to pay attention to that, though, because now this day is gonna be, they can't do it right now. Yep.
They were aware that they could keep us a way back.
So. If we. Needs to be changed. All right, another town, um, rental application is for, um. And this we had talked about last week, this is for, um, the individual Trudy Metzger's son, who's going to do, uh. A talk on moving civilizations out of space. And, um, Dee Dee, Trudy, Metzger, and Dennisson are working together on that. And so, uh, they asked for, um. The date of August sixth to do that presentation, and that's at six thirty.
That's awesome.
Uh, suggestion?
It's really sticky nominations. I've got a few units I'd like to have. Moving to other states.
Right. Um, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve this rental application.
One in a second.
Second? All in favor?
All right.
All right, and next on our agenda is, uh. The treasurer's dispartment, disbursement warrants for employee wages and benefits. And this is actually another name for policy for weekly signing table, uh, table warrants. Um, we had established a policy, um, last year, two years ago. Time flies. Um, to make sure that if for some reason there's only one select board member present, that they could sign, um, table warrants, so that the staff could get paid. And so we said a policy, and actually it's also, I believe, a state statute. Um, so we just developed our own policy, and it's the same thing as we've done the past three years, but, um, it needs to be, um, really. Well, what we talked about was, um. Maybe changing that.
We can.
We can.
I should, I should say.
All right. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we accept this policy on treasurer's reimbursement warrants for employee wages. I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
And I will show you what the title, initial title is today, because it is an alcohol. All right, um, C A I agreement?
So I'm not sure, Ashley asked me about the agenda, and she.
So.
Might be that, that extra week, hold on, the town meeting too, uh. It might be that, that extra week, hold on, the town meeting to CAI.
There's a, a town site, it's, it's kind of like a, you know, it can be staff sites. And that's where we can take up GIA's information from the well through the, actually, not the wells, but the most private information to share outside of that. So that's one of the key things, and you can try out a, it's a, it's a, it's, you know, how, how, what's it?
But she has nothing here, so we'll postpone that for next week or whatever. But I do want to say while we're talking about Ashley, that we finally are getting new phones. I think we had to pay another bill of $900 recently, but we are in the process of getting new phones. And they will be, but hopefully by the end of this week. So when they call us, we can actually get the phone call the same day, not having to wait a couple days. Yes, yes. So we'll postpone that and give you an update on that. And then, taking care of that. Um, there was a question that came up about a request to use the town list to, to send out information. And it was for the Friends of Westport Island. And the question is, it's, it's a 501(c)(3). It's, it's designed for, the reason they want it is so that they can, it's a money-making event. And so the question is, is this something that we can do for a 501(c)(3)? If we do it for one, we have to do it for all. And then the question was, are there others who might want it? And we either say yes to everybody or no, so, thought question. On the application, if somebody's interested in getting a town's email, does it say what types of information they'll be getting?
I don't feel it, no. So, I mean, we do announce all the WCA stuff. In our newsletter, if the WCA is doing things, they have the question. And I, I don't really have a problem with it. We would think, I guess, sanitation, the standalone, you know, the newsletter. And it's, uh, possible.
30 is together.
Yeah, so it's not much here or public here.
30 is 16.
30 is, 30 is, 40 is, 40 is 100.
Okay.
So we're a couple blinders now.
It's, 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 it's been a, it's been a, it's been a, but again, it's going to go back in.
Now, one of the questions that you mentioned last week was, um, there's a limit. So, you know, if you already reached a limit and, and, you know, should we be advertising it if you already fill? And I guess that's a question for John. John, John, you were the ones that, I just remembered, you wanted the application for the rental.
Uh, so, for every member, maybe of a, of a. So, one, the short answer is, if you all would pay with it, and I question, if I can spare. On cycle, especially. Or geez, you know, efficient.
Yeah, yep, yep.
So I, that's a, that's, that's a, but, um, to answer your question, um, consensus that the center is one is, will pay with it. How, uh, preparation. And, you know, we're not. I could have a final decision on.
We're not.
So it feels like it would be a moot point to send it.
It could be, yeah, you know.
Yeah, yeah, that, that doesn't feel comfortable.
Right, right, but that's, that's something that can firmly be registered. So, I would, we, we would ask your way on that issue, because again, I'm a 100% governor. When they go, um, one of the other concern, like, concern sentiments, that is motivated, is dependent on revenue. I can attest, this is a. Is, um, they don't want to invest in your. And there's genuine feeling, that's, that's my role. So I think that's something that. So, I'm in the spirit of, it's part of community, but I express that. A lot of plans, um, if, that's something.
Well, people, and I, for break up, we had a conversation. It was like, oh, I think it was maybe already too late for that newsletter. Thought was like, oh, we're already, capacity, it's not. I was like, I don't know, people are like, oh, so, so back and forth.
Just like change, that has been part of, you know. And so is good.
Well.
So I think it's, it's really, guys.
I would say, my opinion, that I think committees or the organizations that benefit the town hall. I don't have a problem promoting their events. I just think it's better if it's included in the newsletter and not as a separate email. I feel like we're setting a precedent with that. And I think if, if people realize the hows and whens of when April releases her newsletter, and that they can put things in and make contact with people, and let, let them know we'd like to advertise such and such. I have less the problem with it in the, sort of newsletter email than a separate special email for them.
I agree, because with the WCA, I know we've talked about it, and we've tried to make it a point, like, when is, when is April? And, and pretty much, Meg knows now. It's like, we have to have this in by such and such a date so that it gets published. And, and our events are free. And yet, I'm, I'm not totally comfortable with saying, or to, to April, that you send something out for, for WCA for free. What we've done is, done, done our little free signs. So that's, that's my thinking about it.
My thoughts about it, I have to do more with, when somebody gives you their email address, what's the expectation that they're going to get?
Yeah.
And if it's specific to, to town business, town taxes, town this, that. I'm okay with it. I don't, don't know that if people give somebody their email address, then they get inundated.
Right.
I don't want to make those people mad. But I guess I can see the point here, it's, it's a town organization, it's not somebody.
Sign up for the monthly Iowa Little Thing, building letter, a great way to stand off of important dates and events. And learn about all the great things going on in the community. I don't know.
Right, so, no, that is, so, so.
If I sign this, I would then expect, I would get the notice that there's this thing going on with the history. The thing going on with the WCA, and the thing going on with Rick's meeting, I would, that's probably.
But within the newsletter, that you send out.
Yeah, I mean, I would be, I don't want, I would want other groups to be like, oh, well, she sent out lots of, you know, oh. I said we did this for, would you keep the note?
Not that that's going to probably even happen, but I just feel like if we keep it neat and we keep it so that the, the committee's responsible to get in touch with me to make sure that they're.
Now, just to muddy the waters a little more, I think sometimes send out between newsletter emails, emergency. I don't want to strictly emergency those, and, and it's a reminder of being at this party, because the date kept changing, you know, how the.
The special meeting.
I start some stuff to put together, like, I consciously try to keep it, so, what do you know? Read it.
And plus it's responsibility on you. John, if you thought about doing the same thing the WCA does, which is make some signs and put them out there. Because everywhere I drove past a couple weeks, and, and it's like, we had 166 people show up Saturday for our.
Really?
Yep, yep. It was, yeah, and all, you know, we had a bunch in the newsletter, and then we had signs. You know, they weren't perfect signs, but they certainly got the point across.
I love that this is, there's too much information.
Yeah, it would be more if it was. Not just Tom Yefel, right? You've got to pay, yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can, Rob, that, we have a concern also about.
Yeah, at least one of the subjects we could add to half month newsletter.
Yeah.
I would prefer us to make it half month newsletter.
Probably, I would do it.
Make it a easy, easy radio that you use. Add that to it, if you have time to do it.
Yeah, but then, the district committee should know I'm not going to use their back room, probably get back to you. That is not the tone of my newsletter over here, so it's got to be a little bouncy. I mean, one of the last years, unfortunately, we have almost reached capacity, and I'm like, I won't say that. But they got to say.
He's always taking, it's like, releasing the gala.
Right.
You know, you know, committee, they could say, even if they were not, they're waiting, blah, blah, blah. I get all the perks.
It still feels uncomfortable to, to already be talking about a waitlist. Why are you advertising this to the world if then you're going to have a waitlist? That doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah.
I'm like, mm, John, you're like seven.
I know, I should be on your committee and hear the same.
It was all the secrets.
I wouldn't recommend it. This is just.
Going to get, if you were trying to pick, probably.
So, I mean, it's hard.
This is a hot, this is a touchy subject.
Yeah, I, no.
Obviously, I don't think so.
And people change daily, so, it's really what you.
You guys do this yearly? You guys do this yearly?
Yep.
Okay, so you appoint one person to be the person that talks to April about putting something in the newsletter next year?
Um, question, what is, what's the?
The newsletter always goes out, maybe, so, if you can get some. And the 15, you know, varies sometimes, because.
It's a lot.
It never goes out early with the 15 or something.
And when is Stephen?
So, 14 or something.
Yeah.
So what, what I, what I made is, does. Make to announce. So, uh, so.
But we have.
No, to 20, so actually, there's still time.
Yes, so what happens if you don't?
Take it.
It's a one month, one month maybe, for the 15?
It's, it's a couple weeks.
The 15? But it seems to me that if it's not until the 28th, and, and, so that gives you a week and a half, that if you really, really want to sell more tickets, then you could give something to April that would do that. But I think by the 18th, 15th or whatever, that you will have a decision.
Or, oh.
Yes, yes, yeah. I, I just feel like if you've got 150 already, that's.
We have hundreds.
Okay, so.
Well, there you go.
And we don't, and I wish this is a.
Some of them are leaving, because they're responsible. But that's what, that's what I was doing with that.
You could do it as a, hey, thank you for everybody that got tickets, you know, reminder, this is the date. If you'd like to be put on the waitlist for any openings.
I can't, if I spent money on this, I would make sure I go for the day. There's one thing, if it's a great thing, but if I, if I spend money, I'm going to make sure I go for it.
Okay, so, I think I'm hearing, not so good, I want to go. Well, I'll check back and see where you are. That's, maybe 50. Yeah, what day is the week? Monday?
Monday, yeah. Well, it's good, it's, it's good discussion, because, you know, it's asking April to do something like extra. And she's already got a full flight to, and that, that's the other thing is.
I have a floor.
I remember who gave you the floor, go ahead.
Any appointments? I didn't, I didn't know if your appointment, I had a floor. Uh, Jeff's volunteer.
I think Jeff told me too. I heard.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mary Ellen and Joe.
If people were, Jeff, I'm not sure if I could, you know, you're an associate.
So I think, um, I, the, one last thing, and that is, Jeff, do you have any update on the water issue?
Uh, thank you first. Uh, I think I've asked, uh.
I saw that you weren't sure what to do and.
Well, basically, we, we're, I don't know. I don't think we should rely on, was it like? Solution, but there is still possibility. Small, close to, actually, today I had a, I was changing, really, and she said, well, I've got, I've got people. I think that, my personal recognition is, actually, to, to, this is what we do. And, 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 and just, and I think we go ahead with this.
Yeah, this, this feels too serious. It's, it's one thing to do some painting or something, but to, to deal with water lines and stuff.
We've been digging around, and it really came more to us. It affects our history, so, and so. Here, here we, we should go up and put people in company.
Yeah, because you can't, you can't.
And now we've got, well, dirt in front of the building, so.
And you've had a volunteer who's had to work here. They have a volunteer who's helped scan, and she has to come here to the office to set up when somebody's here working, because she can't sit there all day and not trouble down, or run water line, well, you know, water line, a couple months ago.
I think it, the reasons were probably on October.
Wow.
But it took a while for us to discover.
Really? So it could have been, Ross made it worse, but, yeah, I, I saw your email, and that's why I wanted to put it on here, because it feels serious enough to, you know, the, so, if, if you've been working on it, if you know who the person is to, is it Hatch or whoever?
It was Hatch that, that did the, but they're not going to agree with the, well, they could, but they're charged. I think more, again, once he's got escalation capability, and, and good for that. And there's still, Richard involved, and Joseph, well, he knows a word, or something, because we have to be careful of him. And not put him into a second one, which also goes out from the house, like, you know.
And you have to contact, is it the? And you have to contact, um, is it the Sage, Sage or whatever? Have you already contacted them?
I have.
Yeah. So so it seems like there are just so many steps there that, you know, and I know you're getting ready to leave, so if you wanna um we need this chair of this new committee, yeah, yeah. We need this this chair of the new committee that that could take us that on. So um before you leave, if you can let them know if you're, if you've contacted somebody, maybe who you contacted solely a gun, there's chances.
We don't have a plan for where the water in scale of where the septic
You mean like
lines is, you know, a drawing map and a sketch for the water line?
Not that we, there's something that was virtually state years ago that we don't think of. Richard says he has a pretty good idea of well, how long it lasts to suck. And also probably speak out of the but they, there is, you're pointed with it, it apparently fell to the place we got it. And and so we need to be careful. That's the one major is this is being careful.
Do we need something in the um in the
Was that installed prior to L P I's and the movement?
Um, honestly, it's
No. What year?
The house sixteen seventy and I'm not sure when that sucked it, which is so maybe every place, but there's no, no records, no plan because it's always go wherever wherever you can get that. You know, you may have set the plan but you don't have the plan where that two inch line goes in some type of to be straight.
If it was in the seventies, an L P I would have ever signed up. And if the L P I signed up on it, then maybe you've made the adjustments and they filed the papers again.
I don't know. There's nothing, all you can do is go here, there, it's accepted to you. That's the important part. I don't want to get to there.
But Jeff, will you give me an update before you leave and move to go?
I think this is
Okay.
If I do contact, they'd say, well, so
Yeah, if you contact anybody and if not, then we'll figure out.
Well, no, so again, so last thing is we'll talk about wasn't solutions, so
He wants to.
Jeff, are you interested, were you saying hire a coordinator separately from the water committee that would be your pair, would that be judging?
That's right. Yeah, I think so. Uh the the actual oil company could uh do the connecting it would be good to to just verify possibly blow it up as well. There may still be inside layers and some some dirt. So we haven't taken a piece apart. Into the pressure tank, so it stands to that. So it would be good if someone was not much of a
Yep.
To do that responsibility. But when I had talked to the program, he was not excited about it. Same with what, but we really would get some of this.
Well, Bailey's got the excavation team and
Well, the lines are, yeah, but it's the thing about where that septic line is.
Yep.
There's a water line. I think Ashley
She really had something.
You really need somebody, yeah. Yeah, you need somebody.
Yep, yep, I know, I know.
I would say if you printed eight of us, eight of us, maybe I could have that written for you. There again, I guess.
Now, this feels like it's it's a serious thing that needs to be done by professionals. It's 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 important.
So yes, very I think I think we have to catch the the dragway, but I hope, maybe you can avoid going right down where the festival then you're gonna get a payment, so you're gonna come to payment.
Okay.
You know, it's just simple. Then there's obstacles in the ground, and back a couple of hours.
Yep, yep. So if you talk to anybody between now and then, Thursday or whenever you leave, um Kim, Kim and I will be talking, but let us know, okay? If you hear anything from Richard, if he has any, if he says he's got some plans or something, if you get anything, let us know. And if not, we do need
A visitor would be the way.
Perfect, 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 perfect. Okay, because that, I know we need a bring closure.
When I get something before the whole meeting.
Uh, the last thing on the agenda is adjournment. So Wait a minute, please stop one.
No, go ahead, you go first.
Nope, you go first.
All right, well, while we're talking about the right landing and the bathroom in the house, um I'm interested in knowing about the arrangements for the maintenance of the outhouse at the Lake Landing.
That would be part of this committee here because
So I just want to throw out there that
Yep.
I have a little bit of a history with outhouses, so I might know something. And I had some guests last year that I picked up at the landing and dropped off at the landing. It was very, very
Yes, we we do, we have cleaned the um cleaned around there and started the gardens around there. It's been pretty uh pretty bad, so 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 adjourn.
I would just like to say, it's been three, ten, ten years.
I I have um meeting in
Oh, I'm a meeting. The future. I would say the fifteenth.
So you're Monday Wednesday now or the But I need to tell her.
Yeah, so our next meeting will be the fifteenth. We're gonna Friday meeting every other month, every other week.
Something you need.
Every other month. Our next meeting will be the fifteenth. Our next meeting will be the fifteenth. Fifteenth.
You guys had a work
We
Did you decide on your meeting?
No, we talked about Wednesdays. Wednesdays, I think it's
You can't do Thursday.
Right.
So Wednesday, Thursday.
That's
I frequently work. So even if you're not
Yes, we need, we need to
Still need to go.
That's why I
And you can't do Tuesday, Thursday, adjourned.
I can, I just can't do like
I may have stopped
Can you do this?